School Finance. And then we're going to dial into the data that is unique to Raytown. We'll then move to taking a look at how we're ending the year, the current 22 to 23 budget versus actual report. And then we'll take a look at what we're building for 23, 24, as well as three additional years of a forecast. And then I'll conclude with some time for questions. And there we go. There we go. So as an overview of school finance, one of the things that I want to make sure that everyone understands, and most of this is for the benefit of folks who have not been introduced to school finance and the unique parts that that make it different from corporate or nonprofit finance. And part of it is the fiscal year. So that's part of the reason why I'm here discussing the budget at this time. Starting in July through June 30 rather than January through December. And so that's, that's really critical so that it closely resembles the spending habits for the school year. Cash basis, that's really an accounting term. And so what that does is help you to understand that we don't capture assets or accruals or things that you would normally find, like for instance, value of vehicles or buildings would not be presented in the financial reports. So it only, only focuses its attention on cash that's in the bank as well as cash that is going out as a result of the expenditures. So when looking at revenue, we're heavily grant based. There are fees. We do pay a little bit in taxes, but that's really just in the form of payroll taxes as an employer. Revenue drivers. So this is really important because how we are as a, as a, in, in the area of student attendance drives most of our revenue. We are also receiving revenue based on need based programs. And so when you talk about free or reduced lunch and the count, I'm going to show you a report that's showing the trend in that, in that category. And it affects the decisions that we make as far as the projections that we're making for the future. Our local property valuation is also extremely important. It represents over 40% of our revenues are based on local property values. And so as the economy goes and how the county is assessing that property dictates a lot about some of the, the future decisions that we have to make. So just very basic principles, but things that, that affect us in a significant way. Fund accounting. So this is also something that's unique to school districts. And that is that we have four funds. We have a general, a teacher's fund, a debt service fund, and a capital fund, each with its own revenue, revenue sources, and each with its own rules for expenditures. Okay, so as we move into the data analysis, I wanted to quickly just jump on some of those revenue drivers. So student average daily attendance. So this number is essentially taking into consideration not only just our enrollment, but it also talks about or takes into consideration our attendance rate. And if you look at the prior years, so starting with 2016, 17, we've been on the decline, of course, we've talked about this numerous times, but one of the things I want to make sure is really important is that we don't just focus on enrollment, that we talk about how do we get our kids to, to show up? How do we get our kids to show up at a high rate? Because it does affect our, our funding in a significant way. And so you can see for 22, 23 that we've really leveled off. And so hopefully that's not just an anomaly in that when, when we look at 23, 24, that that's going to translate into an upward tree, upward trend so that we can begin to recover. Another revenue driver is, is the headcount of folks who are students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. So this has also been on a downward trend. And, and so when looking at 22, 23, one of the concerns I have is that I don't, I'm not convinced that this is accurate. And when I say that, I just mean I have a feeling that we have more students who qualify than what is represented in this chart. And so we're going to put forth some stronger efforts from, from the departments that I, that I oversee to make sure that we're encouraging families to, to fill out the applications. I think that a more concerted effort is going to, to result in, in what I consider a more accurate reflection of how many students qualify. And then that also translates into more revenue. The other part to it is beyond the revenue is that, that students who truly do qualify receive better services. We're able to provide more to them when they truly are in need of those services. So we want to, to make sure that we get as many people who qualify on that program as possible. And so when looking at the property valuation, that is, that is also, so that's one of the good things about Raytown. We have been on an upward incline with the exception of that 2021 year, I would say. And, and that's going to continue based on the information that we've received thus far from the county, the 23, 24 numbers is in line with that trend. So I wanted to move into some numbers. And now most of the board has seen a lot of these numbers before. But I put in some highlights just so that for the, for the benefit of the public, we all can really get a sense of, of the direction the district is going, where we've been, and then also see some of the things that I've decided or have, have chosen, chosen to, to focus on for the future. When I say ordinary revenue, so in this category, basically everything that the district receives in the category of revenue that does not, that is not inconsistent or, or highly unpredictable. So I've broken out the ones that I consider to be those, those types of revenue. Interest earnings, adjustments that we make every year, COVID grants, as I've highlighted there, shows you how much we've received in federal support, and then bond revenue. So you can see there the revenues that we receive in order to pay for our construction work and renovations and, and improvements to, to buildings. This, while there are lots of small numbers there, I wanted to highlight the trend that we've, that we have in certified and classified salaries. And so if you can look at what we've done in 21, 22, that was the most significant increase in total dollars spent on salary. So the, the district took a pretty aggressive approach that particular year, which I believe was a, it was, was a extreme, extremely positive decision, given the, you know, the, the, where the economy was and where our other districts that were competing for talent with. The other thing is I wanted to highlight was at the very bottom, which is our reserve balance percentage. And so when you think back to that first slide, when I was talking about our fiscal year, I want to make sure you understand that those fund balances reflect the, the amount of money that's in the bank under each of those funds at June 30 of every one of those fiscal years. So that's something to keep in mind. And 20% is the target. That is what's considered to be a healthy percentage. It's one that reflects strength as far as financially, among other districts in the state. And so it becomes something that we want to continually aim for as we develop future budgets. With this, so I wanted to move the discussion to the current year. So 2022 to 23, the current budget versus actual. And so when looking at revenue sources that we've talked about, those on the far right of that, and that legend are the sources in summary. And it does, it does make it really obvious that 42% of our current revenues were received locally. So that's a, that just tells you a lot. And if you were to look at, you know, all districts, each district has its own profile when it comes to its makeup of revenue sources. And so this just so happens to be Raytown's. And it's, and it doesn't say anything good or bad. It just is. Looking at our budget to actual, I was interested in showing you some detail, but not necessarily focusing in too much on every line, but I wanted to give the full scope of how many revenue sources there are for school districts. And, and if you were to look at any other school district, we all receive funding from these, these various sources. I highlighted these just, just simply because of the, the dollar figure. So when you look at our current, our current taxes there, that, that shows you, it kind of ties back to that, that pie chart about the percentage of, of the total. And so when looking at the difference column, you'll see some, some items that have come in a little lower than expected that trigger that negative, but then there are some that that have come in a little higher. So, so it's a positive when you start to get to the subtotals, because most of them, if not all, I think all of them are showing a positive number. So we've, we've done better, we've performed better than the, than the budget that was built for this current year. Another big revenue factor here is what we receive from the state and basic formula. And this, so the revenue driver behind this is ADA. And so, so that's something that, that I will keep a very close eye on, given the fact that we've been on such a downward trend lately. And then hopeful, I've got good, good information to believe that we're going to begin to recover, and I'll, I'll be keeping a close eye on that. The, and that also is showing a surplus compared to the budget. I wanted to also take a look at our S R funding. So this is the COVID funding we had budgeted for this year, but it wasn't necessary for us to, to draw down those funds just yet, not in total anyway. So, so we are coming in lower as a result of that. So that was really a choice that we've made in the finance department. And those funds that are left over will, you'll see it in my 23, 24 proposal that, that will help to, to kind of give us a little bit of a cushion there. And I also highlighted our title money there. So in total for revenues, you'll see there at the very bottom, a surplus, but part of that is what I've highlighted here in the bond fund. So we've already received the 35 million. It's already in our possession. And so we're, we're, we're primed and ready to go as far as our projects with South, South High, the PAC project and the, and the two auxiliary gems. I did want to take a look at expenditures, but I, but I didn't, we, we're not significantly over or under in this, in these categories. So I just will kind of flip through them pretty quickly. But I did want to give you the detail, provide the detail for you in case you had questions. See if there's anything. Oh, there, there's an important one. So, so we've just gotten through an approval process. You, you had approved a proposal with a 2%, an adjustment to 2% as an increase in salaries district wide plus a step. And one of the things that I wanted to make sure and emphasize and make sure that everyone understood was that that ranks as our third best or third largest increase over the last 10 years for the district. And so while that wasn't necessarily as high as what was proposed, I wanted to make sure that everyone understood that we, we still did better than most, than most other years in our past. And I think that when you see what I've put forth here to show the future, I think it puts us in, in good position. So I think we accomplished quite a bit by, by putting forth that proposal. And thank you for, for your support on that. Debt summary. So this is a look at all of our bonds that are currently in place. And so we still have bonds that were initiated in 2014. And these are the, the balances that are existing currently. Just wanted to give you a look at, at where things stand. We are in great shape as far as our bonding capacity. So in the future, when it's time for us to provide some more upgrade opportunities, start talking about those sorts of things, we are in great shape to, to, to continue to upgrade our, our facilities is really the point I want to make. The 23, 24 preliminary budget. So here I went ahead and, and included a column that, that references the 22, 23 existing budget. And, and I wanted to put it side by side with our 23, 24, just so that you can see the differences in what we're doing here. So, so COVID grants, this is how much we've actually received. This is how much we're going to budget for 23, 24, which is going to help us. We did not get rid of all, get rid of, we didn't, we did not move away from all of our COVID funded positions. And it was really because we, there was a need for, to sustain those, not, not all. So we have done, we've made some progress in moving away from those. But having this money come in, in this particular fiscal year does help us to fund those and then continue to look at ways to move away from, from those positions for 24, 25. Looking at our expenditures, this represents the actual results of the increases in certified and classified salaries. That is where we're going to fall on employee benefits. We, I was successful in getting, well, me and my team, we were successful in getting some reductions accomplished in purchase services and supplies so that we, within the year, in, in, in fair condition and in a strong position over our 20% target. These three years are based on the information basically that, that I've accumulated in looking at our past and putting some, what I would consider to be very conservative increases in, in certified and classified salaries. We're able to still heighten just a little bit in purchase services and supplies in order to make this projection work so that we are in a, in a position in the end that I believe the district will still be, can, you know, be nimble and, and able to adjust to any changes that may come as these years will buy. That's all I have. Any questions? Yes, and there, there was an intent to do that, but I'd actually been trying to get as up to date numbers as possible, which meant I actually edited some things today this morning, but I will absolutely.
Very good.
Thank, thank you. Yes, so I will, I will do that. And we have a special meeting at the end of the year, at the end of the, at the end of June, where I will present the final 24, 25 budget, I'm sorry, 23, 24 budget. And some of this information will be in that as well, that will be up to date to. All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions, Mr. Gibson?
So this is, this is basically not like balancing our locals, like our personal checkbooks or anything? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm trying to, trying to help you to look to the future and, and make sure that we're not living check to check.
For sure.
And I think this is, I'm very pleased with where we stand. The future is bright. I think we're going to have some opportunities to do some things. And, and so I'm very proud to present what I have.
And so Ms. Bobby, let me thank you and let me also apologize to you for not providing you with a hard copy, but Mr. Gibson answered. He and I just met today around noonish and some changes were made during that time because this is something that is constant. Everything we do is constant. And so to give you the most authentic and up to date numbers, that's why it continues to fluctuate and you didn't. But I will make sure that you get a copy of this final one. I will provide it in my briefing so that you can have it for future reference. But I also wanted Mr. Gibson to demonstrate the work that takes place with Jackie, Jackie, Mr. Gibson and the entire finance team. As you said, Mr. Watson, this is unlike balancing your checkbook. This is unlike anything that any of us can imagine because school finances are absolutely, completely, totally different from every and anything. Oftentimes you'll hear people say, you know, I have a degree in finance, but if, if it's not focused on school finances, it's a totally different ballgame. So I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Gibson, one, for tolerating me and my continuous questions, but also wanted to make sure that the community knows that this information will always be shared with you because what good are numbers and us balancing our numbers if you don't know what's happening? So this is a way for us to maintain transparency and to keep you informed of the work that's occurring, particularly as pertains to finances.
Yeah, and especially the part about the salary. I want that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm sorry.
Oh, my goodness.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I was just gonna thank Terry for that report also. Just to reiterate, the bottom line is that we had more revenues this year than we thought we were going to have. So that's, that's always a good thing. And since there's a couple of state representatives in the room, one or two, maybe, I don't know. We're, we're thankful for the state's support and we need to continue to have a state's support. And we, I know transportation funding was a significant increase this year, so, and that fully, fully funding the foundation formula is also helpful. So thanks for that and keep it up.
Dr. Knox, do you have anything else?
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much. All right. Next, we have our ray of hope, Chief Communications Officer, Marissa Wamba.
Good evening, Board of Education. Dr. Martin Knox. We have something a little different for our ray of hope this evening. We don't have any students here with us tonight. However, on the last day of school, we visited students from all of our different levels, elementary, middle and high school to ask them, what or who was your ray of hope for this school year? As you can imagine, we got a lot of good and fun answers for our video today.
Hi, my name is Joan. My ray of hope is Miss Gary because she helps us a lot with things that we do.
Oh, well, it's seeing my friends every day because they're making me laugh.
My name is Kalise. I'm in fifth grade and I want to shout out Ms. Williams for helping me when I need to help her math. And I've been so many days at school and for supporting me.
My ray of hope is sharing with Pucky.
My ray of hope is coming to school and seeing Ms. Riley every day.
And the people who have supported me throughout the years is my friends, my teachers, and my whole family.
My ray of hope is with Cheryl. She's supported me all year and I'm still happy.
My hope is sharing with my friends when they're angry.
Hi, my name is Mira. My ray of hope is sharing.
Hi, my name is Willow and my ray of hope is seeing you school every day.
Hi, my name is Hifley. I'm in third grade and the person that's supporting me is Miss Kelly.
Well, I always tell her that I'm smart and, and I can be nice.
Hi, my name is Ashden. My ray of hope is Ms. Riley. I'm a culinary teacher. She calmed me down through the year.
My ray of hope is to have a pet monkey for our school.
They say the darnedest things, so it was fun to hear from them what they enjoyed about this school year. We do have a second recognition this evening and we have with State Representative Barnes and State Senator Barbara Washington here to present to our remarkable track athlete, Zaya Akins. And I'm going to ask them to come forward for their presentation.
Hey, Zaya, come on up.
I'm State Senator Barbara Ann Washington. I get to go first because I'm a senator. Well, also.
Also, it is an honor. I ran track in high school and you are going to the wrong college because I ran as a Mizzou Tiger. And one of my teammates also went to the Olympics. So I know that we're going to see you in Paris next year. And hopefully we can get you out of that sprint and get you into some middle distance. I ran the 800 and the 1500, but it is an honor to stand here with you today. I have a plethora of friends. Your trainer is one of my friends, Mona Lee. My high school friends, one of them who died a couple of years ago, used to coach a race south and still to this day holds one of the records in the 100. So what you have done as an athlete is amazing, but what you have done as a young woman is even better. So we wish you all the luck as a wildcat. And we won't bore you all with Jerome, Jerome, I'm not. But we have resolution, this is from the Senate, just to honor you for your track accomplishments and also your accomplishments as a student athlete, because as you know, student is first. And just as a young woman for giving back to your community and understanding that to whom much is given, much is required. So we are really, really proud of you in Missouri and we wish you all the luck in Kentucky. And we hope to see you win, win, win the SEC. And we are looking forward to seeing you next August in Paris.
Well, you know, every time I go somewhere with Barbara, she's the upper chamber and she definitely lets you know that. So as, as the House of Representatives, I am very, very honored to be here tonight to represent the House of the State of Missouri. You know, sometimes it feels like we're just put away down there and locked away, but we keep our eyes on what is going on in the current events. You might not hear from us until you see a bad bill or bad law that's been passed and then you kind of get mad at us. But before I get into this presentation, I just want to compliment the Transportation Department because my grandbaby, who's five years old, she insists that she want to ride the school bus. I said, you don't have to, babe. I'm going to take you to school. She said, no, you're not. I am riding the school bus. And I just hope she keep that up throughout her little career. So I just wanted to put that part in there that the Transportation Department is doing an excellent job. They come and, and they there when they say they're going to be there. And so, thank you, thank you. So, but like I said, I, you know, after reading over this, you know, I get excited every time. So, but I'm not going to bore you with everything on here. You know, for an athlete to go through their high school career and participate in sports and never lose a meat, you know, that's incredible. Yes, it is. And not only to not lose a meat in their high school, but to set state And not only to not lose a meat in their high school, but to set state records that probably gonna stand for a while. Not only that, an eight-time Missouri State High School athletic, so athletic, uh, uh, champion, state champion. Yes, absolutely. And as a referee, I do get a chance to see this type of stuff happen. You know, as a referee, I get to see it and been sitting down there and at the state office, I get to rub shoulders with all of the top class, uh, individuals. And when, uh, when I found out that, uh, uh, I, no, hold up. I practiced this. I have practiced this. I'm not gonna get her name wrong. Zaya Akins. Yes, yes. And so I just want to let her know that we down in Decapul, we paused for a few minutes to recognize and honor a great citizen, uh, who has, uh, stood, uh, who stood above her class. And hopefully you hang this on your wall with pride and thank you so much.
Dr. Knox, getting the picture. Yeah, thank you so much.
Oh, hey, I told you, hey, that's why I like going places with Barbara.
Does this mean I can run?
Yeah, we can get, um, Coach and Mickey and. Give her another round of applause.
See, I told you, Barbie, you're not, you're not on your job. Okay, I also thought that, uh, you need something to write on when you're down there.
They don't write anymore.
And also, uh, if you, you don't have to go buy a pencil, nothing.
Who's gonna give you this bag to carry it on?
And if you ever get in trouble, just remember you got somebody to stay home.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're here.
All right.
Zaya, do you mind if we ask a question? It's, 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 it's kind of funny, but it's really something I always wonder about. How, you can stay there, but how? How and when did you know you were fast? Faster than anybody else? Were you just out in recess or you running away from some kids that were your brother? Then one, just one other comment for down the road, when you're rich and famous and your career is over. Just we, last year at the school board conference, we heard from Jackie Joyner-Kersey. She spoke to us and, and what she does right now is give back to her community and it's just an amazing story. So you probably know about her, but if you don't, check up on her and then maybe follow her example when you're rich and famous and finish with your racing career.
I just wanted to say one thing to you, Zaya. I just wanted to say congratulations and I know it takes a lot of dedication to do what you do. And I want to tell you, just continue to do what you do and follow your dream and your passion. And I wish you the best of luck with your future and all endeavors you incur.
Yes, that's the sentiment of the board.
Zaya, I just want to thank you for coming here, being here, but I also want to, uh, thank your mother, my sister, Mickey, and your father, my brother, Eli. Um, just for their dedication. I know, uh, what it takes to be, um, an Olympic athlete. That's how you trained since you were in fifth grade, like an Olympic track athlete. And so, uh, when Senator, uh, Washington talked about where you'll be and your aspirations, we highly and truly believe that. And we're just so proud of you as a board, uh, proud of you for not only what you do on the, on the field, on the track, but how you are in the classroom and how you are as a young lady, just someone that people and, and young people can look up to and admire. And so just want to let you know how much you mean to us, uh, and we will continue to support you at Kentucky. We look forward to, uh, to great things from you. All right, you welcome, babe.
No wonder you wanted to claim.
That's why I waited till the end so I could say it. Yeah. I had a trump on y'all, yeah, yeah. I mean, y'all cool and everything, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, home cooking. That's right, that's right. All right, um, we're now on to our public comment period. We didn't have anyone sign up for public comments this evening, so we're, um, going to our board committee reports. We'll start off with the finance committee.
No other report. We met this evening and basically just heard the same, uh, discussion that, uh, Mr. Gibson gave to us this evening, so no other report.
Thank you for that. Uh, I know our policy review committee is set to meet after the meeting tonight, but.
That's it, sir. You said it.
Come on now.
It's, we're meeting tonight after this board meeting and, uh, we'll report to you next time.
Thank you so much. Uh, capital improvement committee. We're also slated to meet, so report on that. Uh, culture. Culture and Citizens Advisory Committee, I'm a c- culture and climate committee, I'm sorry.
Um, no report at this time, but we will be meeting.
All right. Curriculum and profession development.
We had one last month, but we'll have something to report next time.
Thank you. Uh, safety committee. I'm also on that and Alonzo and I are on that as well, so. I'll meet again next month and then the Citizen Advisory Committee update. All right, C A C. All right, next up, oh, well, make sure we do, yeah. Is that showing on you guys? Is it synced up there, correct? Yeah, it's not advancing, but we'll go ahead and, um. Yeah, just make a. Let's make a motion. Second, no. Any objections? All right. All right. Next on the agenda, we have, um, new business. Yes, we, we're just doing it manual now, just cause. Yeah, it's not, it's not coming up. We're going back to that, make sure we do that. I apologize. Call for an all vote, all in favor? All opposed? All right. Uh, new business, first up is, um, bus purchase. Intended Healthy Operational Fund. Identify partners to support schools and programs. Facility Management and Capital Improvement Program, compare and compete with similar school districts. An action item. You go ahead. Second. All in favor? Oh, here, it's working now. Do you have any discussion? Yes.
So I, I fly perfectly there.
Yes, and so, uh, these are actually buses that we have leased, uh, and so we've, um, been able to see them perform. And these are the best out of the last batch of leased vehicles we've had. So, um, there's actually some that we're gonna let, um, let the lease expire and return, uh, because they're just, they're just not as good. So these, these that we are proposing to, to, to buy are, are the best, the best bunch. That, we are buying what we are currently, they're currently under lease and we're, we're purchasing ten out of, I believe, fifteen. Correct. It is, it is, just because they're already in our possession and we're still dealing with, um, delays, uh, in purchasing, uh, brand new buses at this time. So, uh, these will, um, continue to be part of the fleet going into next school year. We'll, we'll get into some discussion about, um, because there is a plan, like a rotation. Um, so we have some buses that are, um, starting to, to reach their end of life. And so we'll have some discussion about how we want to either take on new leases to replace those buses or, or to, to do an outright purchase. So we'll, we'll weigh the pros and cons and come to you with a proposal.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, sorry, I didn't have my mic down.
Oh, no, you're fine. Come on, Rick.
Hey, I got a question.
Yes.
Um, so we are paying five hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars for ten buses that we are currently leasing.
Correct.
And how many years have we been leasing them?
That is a good question. I'd have to come back to you with that one. My, my Director of Transportation wasn't able to make it to the, to the meeting.
So what I, then the other part of my question is that since we're paying this amount for ten, how much have we paid in leasing? Based on the number of years that we've leased, how much have we paid? I'm just curious to see, are we really getting a good deal?
The return. Yeah, I, I haven't made that calculation. That's something that is something I will.
You can just have, um, Rachel send it to us next week.
Okay. Absolutely. You have a question from Terry? Mr. Gibson? Thank you. All right, thank you.
I'll let you slide since you did such.
Woo, got that hot seat, man. It's tough. See right in front of you too, so. All right, um. This is twelve point two. Remind contract, two-way communication tool.
Did we vote already?
Hmm, we would have a last one.
Okay, that's okay. Don't worry about it.
You have a motion? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They're just, okay. Uh, we, we, we smoking right now. I'm cooking with fish grease up here. You got it. You have any discussion about? Four minutes? No? All right. Um, item four point three, renewal of milk provider. Motion for it.
I moved that the Board of Education approved the contract renewal with Anderson and Erickson for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year at an approximate cost of nine hundred and fifty thousand.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
All right, it's coming up. Any discussion about that? Any question? All right. It's a lot of milk.
Does that milk include their juice and all of that?
No, Anderson Erickson, well.
I think, I think that they do.
Here, does that include, uh, the, the milk, well, their juices as well, Anderson Erickson? Like juice, orange juice, apple juice?
And it's for the year, right?
Correct. Correct.
No, 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 that's just a lot of milk, man. Do you get strawberry milk with that too? Cause, all right, I just want to make sure, cause. All right, two percent, all right. You get the farms. All right, appreciate that. Um, item twelve point four, renewal of Microsoft licensing.
All right, Mr. President, I moved that the Board approved the renewal of Microsoft licensing from C D W dash G for the amount of eighty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and three cents.
Now, second.
Second.
Evan. Yeah, question?
Who's answering?
We have our Director of Technology.
I was just curious, um, perhaps this is an educational moment for me. So this is explaining the process here, the licensing, uh, the renewal of a license we have to pay for the renewal of it, and this is to cover all what?
Yeah, so on there, the primary purpose of it is for, uh, office on our staff devices. And so, um, when you look at that bid, there's a couple of products up there. The big piece of it is, uh, we have to license office on about a thousand staff devices in the district. So of course we do that for all of our teachers, all of our administrators, and other positions like our counselors, secretaries and pieces like that. And so that's an annual process we do have to do each year. There's a couple of other pieces on there, so we do maintain quite a few SQL databases and so, uh, Microsoft SQL Server is also on there as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
You have other questions? All right, thank you. Did you guys get those? On there? Okay, noted. All right, thank you. We're there. Thank you, man. Uh, item twelve point five, renewal frontline absence and time solution. Have a motion?
Mr. Vice President. I'm gonna do the motion. Let me do the motion first. Mr. Vice President, I move that the Board approve the frontline education renewal in the amount of seventy-four thousand, seventy-eight dollars and eighty-one cents.
Now, second.
Second.
All right, any questions about that? Dr. Douglas?
I'm reading.
And I think I have explained a little bit to us about what that is.
Yeah, so this bid's actually for two of the products. We do use three products with frontline. It's the product we use to track absences for our staff members. And then that's the system that will actually go make phone calls and emails to get our substitutes to go claim those jobs when we have an absent teacher. Um, and then that's the entire process where it's, you know, where its staff can request that absence and obviously fulfill it with the substitute. Then the time and attendance piece. Then the time and attendance piece is actually the time clocks we use out in the buildings, so several of our staff members will clock in and out uh during the day. One of our time keeping plot, keeping class, excuse me, and that's, that's what, that system will actually track each one of those punches and then calculate the number of hours they've worked each week.
Is this is in line with other districts utilize as well? Around?
Yeah, there's two of them, um this was the one we picked, I think, uh the other one that some districts will use is Kronos. We're able to actually take a uh an automated import in each uh each pay period, and then we we're able to automate out of our our system to get our staff automatically loaded into those two uh software packages.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope, all right. Thank you for your time. Uh, next up, item twelve point six, a renewal of NWEA. Have a motion?
Mister President, I move that the Board of Education approve NWEA for student services in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school with a two thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cent discount for a total two-year renewal of seventy-seven thousand dollars nine hundred and twelve and fifty cents.
Second?
Second.
All right. We have Dr. Griner, can you explain less, look, I think this is a little bit about, uh is it virtual courses?
Good evening, Board. Uh, NWEA is a universal screening tool that we provide to all of our students at the beginning, middle, and end of year to measure their growth in English language arts and math. So this is a way that we can progress monitor our students during the year uh in literacy and numeracy, and we use that information to help our teachers uh collaborate around interventions for students that are at risk. Uh, we also utilize it to um identify students uh that may be um candidates for um accelerated programs as well. So, it's a universal screening tool that we use three times a year, and it's a um uh an academic test that our students take to measure their progress in literacy and numeracy.
You have other questions?
Mine is then, that part of like.
I'm sorry, say that again?
When it's like, uh, project by his line is thing? What, oh, okay, okay, no, no, no.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, item twelve point seven, purchase of custodial supplies. We have a uh motion.
I move that the board approve the purchase of custodial supplies from, what is it, for facility supply using the TIPS contract two-three-oh, one-oh-three, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two million?
That's a lot of toilet paper.
It was, I was going fast.
All right, we have a second for that?
Second.
I think we have Josh here, Josh here, yeah. Yeah. So when it talks about the TIPS contract, you kind of break that down a little bit for us?
Sure, it's a purchasing contract, it stands for uh inter-local purchasing system. Uh, we use that many times, and so everything's pre-priced on there, I look at that, and then we have another buying, uh can't see cooperative that we go through. So we look at both of those and buy from the cheaper, and this time it was cheaper to go through tips.
Okay.
And that's for the entire year.
So this is, this is the number for the entire year?
Yep, we will, we will make purchases, like if we get uh, because those are all estimates based off what we've used in the past, so if we have more construction or um, you know, some floods or whatnot, then we may have to adjust that as the year gets into, but overall, that's our number for the year.
Okay.
Yeah, Josh, do we ever have a case where we uh have a set dollar amount, but it's, it's less than that?
Uh, I'm not sure I understand your question.
We have the one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, I was just saying, do we ever have a, in a case where it's less than what we presented with?
Uh, yes, so like during COVID years, when we did, when we didn't have kids in session, uh we did not spend as much the following years because some of those things were able to just to return. Uh unfortunately, some items have a shelf life, and so some of those items like soap, hand sanitizer, uh we were, we had to toss some of that stuff because there was not people and abilities to use that, cause nobody predicted the COVID was coming.
Just curious.
Okay.
So, so I have a related question, what she was asking, so if we don't is this a set price, like if we end up using a lot more supplies, that we get everything we need for a hundred seventy-two thousand?
Or we still get everything that we ordered for that price, but the set price, so like.
So it's still a unit price?
It's a unit price.
More we pay for that.
Correct.
Okay.
So if we, we need more, if we were forty cases of of a product and we need another ten, we still pay the same unit price that we're going with now.
Okay.
That's good for one calendar year.
Where do we store all this stuff?
Our warehouse.
Warehouse. Is it um climate control?
It is.
If it's climate controlled, then why is there, I I mean, I understand things have shelf life, but I was always taught that the date it on there is always longer than what it is actually.
But what we do in our personal lives and what we do in public education are sometimes different.
Relating what's common to me.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, you know, that's a lot of money, and I just was curious, you know?
Can you freeze it, huh?
I I mean, just, if it's climate controlled, why can't we preserve it, I mean?
Be happy to forward those emails to you, for our billion principals.
Don't do that, please, so, I'm already overloaded.
All right, thank you. Four point eight, purchase of copy paper.
I don't have anything excited tonight, I apologize.
This is gonna be elaborate, so just stick around for this. Say.
All right, second.
Any questions about paper? All right, there's a note, Representative Barnes could probably get us some paper. He's gone, but we have an end for that. All right, any questions for Josh? No, all right.
Thanks much.
Thank you. All right, uh, four point nine, first read. IGAB instructional interventions. IGC extended instructional programs, IKE promotion, acceleration and retention of students, IL assessment program, IND ceremonies and observances. Hey, President Burton, how you doing? Good to see you, man, missed you. Just wanted to tell you that, from everybody. Yeah. Almost.
This is a first read, isn't it?
Yes, first read, yeah.
Do you want a motion on the consent agenda?
Okay, oh, go ahead.
It has been brought to my attention that we do not serve strawberry milk.
We was, we can't.
A million dollar question. Oh, man.
Carrie, you've heard that adage that says that the cow that gives a good pail of milk and to turn around and put his foot in it? Okay.
I've never heard that one.
Well, it's a true saying.
Is it?
You give a good pail of milk and then you turn around and put your foot in it.
Okay.
You understand what that means, right?
What he just did.
What you just did with the strawberry.
You were so like adamant about it, though.
Oh, gosh.
All right, moving on to our consent agenda.
Mister President, Mister Vice President, I move that the board approve the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three consent agenda as presented.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, item thirteen point two. May eighth, twenty twenty-three open session, and May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three special session meeting minutes.
We got them all, we started all.
We had to read them all out? Okay. Yeah. I can do something. Thank you. All right. Oh, I'm sorry, good evening, everybody. Sorry for my uh my tardiness, but I'll read the donations, cause we greatly appreciate them. Uh, donation of snacks worth forty dollars from Christina Brooks at Saint Matthew's Episcopal to Robertson Elementary. A donation of staff lunch of worth three hundred dollars from our Olive Garden to Nutrell's Early Learning Center. Donation of teacher lounge, microwaves, paint, cleaning supplies, and coffee pot in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars from Blue Ridge Presbyterian Church to Blue Ridge Elementary School. Donation of IKEA gift cards in the amount of twenty-four hundred dollars to purchase new furniture for teachers in the lounge from Grace Way Church to Blue Ridge Elementary. Donation of Visa gift cards in the amount of a thousand dollars to purchase new furniture and decor for the teacher's lounge from Life Changers Church to Blue Ridge Elementary. A donation of soda and snacks worth a hundred dollars for Staff Appreciation Week from Pastor Fuller at Ivanhoe United Church of Christ to Robertson Elementary. Donation of crumble cookie worth a hundred and sixty dollars for a teacher appreciation. I know Rick's mad he missed that. Uh, okay. An appreciation week from Jules Sneddon at Grand Canyon University to Robertson Elementary School, that's the crumble cookie word. Yeah, there she is. Yeah, okay. Donation of cookie trays and water worth seventy dollars from Price Chopper to Nutrell's Elementary Center. Donation of flags and flag coat worth a hundred dollars from Mary Lippy with Daughters of the Revolution Prairie Chapter to North Fleet Elementary School. A donation of five thousand dollars to Raytown Three Trails Kiwanis Club from Raytown Three Trails Kiwanis Club, to Raytown Schools Parents' Teacher Program. Donation of journals, pens, wristbands, selfie poster, and signs and snacks totaling thirteen hundred and fifty-five dollars from the Raytown Education Foundation to the Raytown School District for the First Annual Sparkle Empowerment Conference. Donation of five hundred dollars from the Raytown Education Foundation to Raytown School District Academic Night. A donation of another five hundred dollars from Shana Burns at Commerce Trust Company to Raytown School District's Academic Night. Donation of two hundred dollars from Carrie West at Raytown Lease Summit Community Credit Union to Raytown School District's Academic Night. A donation of four hundred dollars from Bill Esri at Blue Ridge Bank and Trust to Raytown Schools District's Academic Night. A donation of two hundred dollar Hy-Vee gift card from Hy-Vee Store number fifteen forty-two to Southwood Elementary School. Donation of personal protective equipment worth thirty-five thousand dollars from Spire to Herndon Career Center. Donation of gift certificate for two tickets to the Coterie uh Theater worth thirty-nine dollars from Coterie Theater to the Raytown School Summer School Program. Donation of tickets to the Kansas City Zoo from the Kansas City Zoo to the Raytown Summer School Program. Donation of movie tickets to to B and B Theaters from B and B Theaters to the Raytown Summer School Program. Donation of custom eight-by-ten photograph of twenty twenty-two Kansas City Chiefs Super Bowl championship team from the Kansas City Chiefs to the Raytown Summer School Program. Donation of coupons for McDonald's from Essex Family McDonald's to Raytown Summer School Program. Donation of tickets to the Negro League Baseball Museum worth sixty dollars and a Negro League's poster autographed by Buck O'Neil worth seventy-five dollars from the Negro League's Baseball Museum to the Raytown Summer School Program. Donation of four passes to the to National Museum of Toys and Miniatures worth forty dollars from the National Museum of Toys and Miniatures to the Raytown Summer School Program. Donation of four children, all excess passes, I'm like donating four children. Help, whoa, helping out in Roman. Uh, donation of four children, all excess passes for the museum at Prairie Fire from the museum at Prairie Fire to the Raytown Summer School Program. Not done yet. Donation of four passes to the Science City and the Arvin Gottlieb Planetarium worth ninety-two dollars from Union Station, Kansas City, Inc. to Raytown Summer School Program. A donation of four ticket vouchers to Royals baseball game worth eighty dollars from the Kansas City Royals to the Raytown Summer School Program. Donation of family passes worth Wonderscope to the Wonderscope Children's Museum worth fifty-four dollars each uh to Wonderscope Children's Museum to the Raytown Summer School Program, and last but not least, donation of four hundred sugar cookies and four jars of sprinkles totaling three hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighteen cents from Price Chopper to Southwood Elementary. We greatly appreciate all of these donations, and we know that it goes towards the academic achievement of our students. Absolutely. I mean, he was taking us home. All right.
Mister President. So, I'll, I was just gonna, that's probably the longest list we've ever had. And they're all important, they're all great, but some of them, like, like the thirty-five thousand dollar one, do we do anything, like any kind of special certificate or anything for something like that to commemorate that or?
What we've been doing to your point is, we can actually do a certificate, but I typically send a letter of thanks or appreciation.
Okay.
Who signed that letter? From Spire?
I I haven't done that one yet.
I am, okay, I just thought maybe since it was thirty-five thousand, maybe you saw that one.
It's in the, that's in the category with the strawberry milk, I didn't.
All right.
All right, Mister President, I move that the board adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting at seven fifty-one PM.